Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting in order at this time. Please turn all cell phones, electric devices off or vibrate. Mr. Fuentes, would you please leave us in a hurry or we'll cut this evening's air.
Lord of honor, we thank you for the bring here again so far. We are blessed to have it. We have to bless our church, Kewell City, and we praise you for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. We have to bless us as a council, make the best decision for the city boundary. Amen and pray. Amen.
Let's pray that this is to be the body of the United States somewhere and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval minutes of September 17th, 2018. Please invite a time review.
I didn't see any changes that need to be changed other than what we get, of course. Everything for the new.
All right, motion to accept the minutes is presented.
I'm going to move.
Have a second. Uh, whoever said it, uh, is everybody awake or not? All right, visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Do we have one?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to see what's possible about having the copper put in around 16th Street there next to the closed section of Avenue A. So far, I've been unable to have the county or the city. Both say it's the average responsibility.
Is that in the county or in the city?
Well, my property sub is in the county. The county says that the city limits is in the center of the ditch.
Okay.
And the city says the middle of the street.
Okay, so I'll locate anything.
Okay, all right. I'll get back with you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else?
No.
All right. City council may consider, discuss, or take action to on to selling 1995 Chevrolet firetruck to Rowena Volunteer Fire Department. And this is in accordance with the purchase of a new vehicle, so this is part of the CFA brought to us previously as a summit to Rowena in order to move forward on the new purchase of a new unit. Do you have any questions or concerns about that?
None.
Price? Motion to accept the sale to Rowena of the 1995 Chevrolet firetruck to Rowena.
You got it. Should've looked.
Second?
Second.
On the table say.
Uh-huh.
Second.
Jason, what do you want us to do?
Yeah.
It was down to time.
Okay, I didn't ask, I saw your resume. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action to in attic ordinance permitting the rate fees for water and sewer taps. You should have an extra drop in your packet. Uh, current ones are listed as well as proposed. I'll just say. Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions or concern? Or it wasn't being presented?
There was some reason.
Some reasoning?
That's pretty good reason. That's a big reason.
Yeah, well, uh... They haven't been announced yet in quite a while. And some of our, our taps are brass and a lot of the materials gone up, you know, and the process of materials going up. And so we felt there was a need to increase rates for water meter tapping fees and some of that.
So we behind it and actually jumped in price this much?
Yeah, the materials have been, they jumped in price. Uh, this brings it current to what it is now. We haven't had a rate change in, what'd they say, five years? So, uh, you know, the fluctuation in materials pricing, uh, this is where makes this current to, I don't want to say modern day, but to what the real estate price.
Take that to the pricing?
Yeah.
Oh, but is this considering the new piping, like the old piping or?
Well, I mean, because when you're, we're tapping on to the new pipe pipe. But we're also, if we tap on to some of the older stuff that's around right now, I mean, even though we have a schedule to replace it, uh, if we have to tap on to it, if someone requests a tap this week, we have to tap in with the old material.
Okay, so this is not necessarily just for new construction, this is any tap?
Any tap that we have.
So does this fall within the range two, three, quarter dollar increase with the materials cost?
Uh, this, the proposed rate reflects current material costs. Uh, we were, we were lagging behind in our, in our rate changes. We hadn't, no one's looked at them quite a while, so, uh, we started looking and we were losing on our, on our taps that we were charging.
You know how the average further cities, I mean, this is a matter of interest.
I did not, uh, but we can go look.
That is true.
Yeah, no, uh, this is just what we're getting from our suppliers. And, you know, I don't know what, uh, deals they might have, but, I mean, we can go find out, but if it's, if we're going to do a tap, I have to see what's our current material pricing.
If we can, yeah.
It is.
So is, would you consider fair to say that it costs more to do it on those two skilled pipe than the new pipe?
Very much so.
That's what I call.
Yeah. On the old steel, the, the.
Yeah, and you got the welder, I guess.
Right, right.
With welder, whereas the poly, you have welder and not like that.
Correct. But, you know, PDC will be somewhere in between, you know, so, but you still have brass when you connect with PDC. So we have, we have lots of new pipe in the ground, that's the problem.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And I know those sound, I don't know, you know, the plan. Just pretty good, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns?
So Tom, if you lessen that a little bit, but you'll follow the year comfortably.
We could, uh, we could go back and locate it, we can, we can come back with some more information.
What do you think?
Great.
Yeah, sure. Is that the highest standard or is that the high?
Well, this is the highest standard that we're.
So we can adjust?
We can. This is one of our maximums that we've elected. You know, if it's going to cost a lot, then we can start at our maximum.
If you lessen it, then we'll be back in here till the next year because of material increases again.
Right.
Have the same conversation.
Right, right.
That has been held on to?
Uh, roughly five years, is what I understand.
How close were you in?
Well, it, it jumped into whatever was current for years, so.
Can you tell us what the old and the new are?
Yes, I'm sorry, we didn't have that, Cory was out today.
Yes. Uh, yeah, my IT guy had, his brother had emergency surgery, so I threw this together and, uh, I didn't have this when we did it. So the meter tapping fees for three-quarter inch to five-eighth inch is present range $300. Uh, we're proposing $500. The one-inch tap is $375, we're proposing $575. The two-inch tap is $475, we're proposing $775. Uh, four-inch and up, $575 is current, $975 is what we're proposing.
That's not bad.
Well, I mean, this isn't, uh, let's say, to get a meter put in, it's just, if you have to tap on to a, to a 250 line that we have. And, I mean, it could be a new house, but maybe their, their old, uh, ill water main is still there, you see. Or it could be, uh, maybe they're changing their waters to stone and need to tap considering what he's.
Somebody wanted to come in, put in a water strength or system, and there you go, and it would be a good tap.
It never tapping out to water.
Yeah. So you can't pay the shit, but pay for the meter?
Yes, we pay for the meter. Because those rates don't include the cost of the meters. Didn't include anything about, we provide the meters for the public.
So this would be like a new subdivision came in where there is no existing water taps?
Uh, true, yes, a new subdivision. Uh, if you had a lot that never had a house sign, you put one on there. Uh, if you are remodeling a house and moving your existing tap to one side or the other, I mean, so this is for a brand new tap.
They see the line with like more, I think more terminals, we've gotten close before for clients, hasn't seen that.
Yeah, well, we just left in, we were paying a lot of extra C line.
Yeah.
As opposed to what we were getting.
The current price is pretty thick compared to some of the other ones that I've.
So yes, sir.
I'm trying to come up with a half a meter here. I don't have a problem with two and four it up. I don't have a problem with that because that's very expensive. It's, that's, that's in the fight, very expensive. Three-quarter to five-eighths, I don't think that might be a lot. But, um, look.
So we put a little bit, a couple of research that you're going to.
Well, I've almost known a bit of duty for thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, this is what we're getting charged, so, you know, if, if, if we, uh, uh, we can take a less surprise, you know, our offsets a little more.
Look, Tommy, most of them, what, what's that?
Uh, two-inch or under, two-inch or under.
Well, Jordy holds on to three-quarter and ten-toe.
Three-toe.
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 Just to be tabled. So considering, it's been five years, considering I do know that the price of material has increased 10 over, and I guess I could go along with this, but. Well, just go ahead.
I'm going to step out and probably say that the increased activity minimum, I'll do that, so, has affected our pricing considerably. But, I mean, that's what we're competing with the, the poly pipe. Uh, it is, we don't get up since we locked last time and, uh, probably 30%.
Just for my education, we do have all the equipment to well poly pipe and sell us.
Yeah.
Pipe well together and that thing.
Right.
When we get the right roll back.
Yes. We have our, all the necessary equipment we need to install the poly.
But I don't want to have to come back and say, okay, we don't have the equipment to do this, we need more equipment.
Uh, this is stuff we do, uh, you know, regularly. It's not something we do every day, you know, when the need arises. We have everything we need.
So Tommy, would you say most of the connections would be the three-quarter and five-eighth?
Yes, we, we have, uh, we have a lot of pipe room that our ways over Brown Avenue A and B broad, uh, that are two-inch. Now, they'll tap on to the main line, on to a two-inch. Right. Uh, we do have a lot of one-inch and three-quarter.
But as the size goes up, the extension goes up.
Yes.
What if we dropped that first one up there a hundred dollars and left probably the others to set?
We could do.
So from three to $400, leave the others to set. I'm just squaring it out. Sure. Three-quarter to five-eighths, three-toe and leave the others to set. That's about it. Could also know that he is right about the other pipe and ground, the cast iron and the copper pipe and everything, that's.
PDC.
Eight hundred and forty, do you reckon? Would you be okay with it?
Yes, I would.
Okay, Tom's okay, absolutely. I don't really think that, that I don't.
Did any of the operations in our, you, uh, keep running? But, you know, if, if we did it once a week, it would be one thing, but, you know, uh, maybe once a quarter, twice a quarter, something like that, we had this issue.
All right, motion to accept permitting the rate fees for water and sewer taps with the adjustment of the three-quarter to five-eighths from 300 to 400 instead of 500.
But I'm sure.
Have a second?
Sure.
On the table say. All right, thank you. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action authorized Gayla Fullerton to conduct the annual audit for fiscal year ending September 30th, 2018. Yesterday was the last day of the 2018 fiscal year, today is the first day of 2019 fiscal year budget. Uh, Gayla has been contacted by the Water Development Board to try to expedite this audit for next year due to the funding or tragedy for the water project. The contract, Rick Cobb earlier wrote up, basically, the first page she has accepted at September 30th, 2017. So with that amended, made to the contract, we can get that back to her if y'all is okay with her, uh, performance of it, uh, audit the last couple of years.
This is the same, what is that?
It's the same contract, she has to do an engagement letter every year by law, so she does it. And, uh, but Rick wrote up the fact that she had the wrong date because she probably didn't catch that.
She did. She's still saying, oh, twenty thousand?
Yeah, she actually got to reduce that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It was twenty-two, twenty at one time, now is it less than twenty?
No, the very first time, I want to say it was twenty-five or twenty-seven, but she reduced it to twenty.
Okay. Twenty-eight, no. Uh, twenty-eight.
And now, what'd you say?
Twenty-eight, no. Says, no, I need to say twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Twenty thousand, see, twenty thousand, eight hundred. There we go. You said twenty-eight, so I see twenty-eight hundred, so I was confused when you were saying twenty-eight.
Yeah, well, that would be a good idea, that's.
Yes, if no motion to accept, the individual letter for Gayla Fullerton to, uh, start the annual audit for fiscal year 2018.
I'm going to vote.
Is that a second?
Second.
On the table say. All right. With revision, of course. All right, city council may consider, discuss, or take action to approve and originate depository financial institution, ACH, agreement with Bound International Bank. Does this say a little bit of what you're?
This is not great. Well, what we do, uh, what we used to do, well, okay, as, as technology's catching up to things, what we did on our payroll and on our, uh, our direct deposits, uh, for payroll and then the water bills.
Big guy.
Yeah, big guys. Uh, we put it on a, on a thumb drive, flash drive, and physically it's learned to the bank. Uh, they don't want us to do that anymore, we're going to do it via the internet.
Right.
So, anyway, this is the contract to, to approve that. So that's all it is.
Everybody get that one in? All right, motion to do.
I do this.
Motion to accept the original deed of depository financial institution, ACH, agreement with Bound International Bank. Second?
Second.
On the table say. All right. Another contest between Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Fenton. All right, consider approval of Billy Perkins, I believe you only have one, lady Stacy Portland. And basically, they are moving in on mobile home and following that, there is the various letter that she has signed stating the fact that she understands it is in the floodplain and they are not going to hold the city of boundary liable for that, like being in the floodplain.
Well, and they're actually just taking one out and putting a new one in.
Okay.
So it's.
So one goes into the footprint and either.
Yes, basically. They're just updating their house.
Then I have a problem. What's going to become?
Uh, it's going back to the mobile home manufacturer as a tree.
It's outside here.
Yeah, no, it's, it's somewhere outside your house.
Yes, this is what.
I'm going to ask somebody to put that one, put it in there.
Second?
Second.
On the table say. Thank you. All right. Here in the police activity month of reports, thank you, chief. Stand your next, please.
Uh, September, we've had nineteen arrests, eight accidents, three hundred fifty-seven calls for service, um, issued fifty-one citations and almost $9,500 in court funds. So, um, nothing too major happen. Uh, we do have a national night out tomorrow, um, down there by the fire hall. Please come out and join us, free food, you know, get out to your community, um, and that's about it.
So we're going to do it inside or the outside or?
We're going to outside. Uh, we'll, we'll serve the food inside the fire, the fire base, um, branch will move all the firetrous out and we're going to throw the food inside there. Everything pretty much going to be on the outside.
Anybody have any questions, concerns? One time. One short, what time?
Uh, it's kind of, we're going to start at six. Six, we're going to follow these, uh, six to eight, we're going to start serving around six-thirty, six forty-five somewhere around there. So seven, eight barbecue is done, uh, bringing the brisket sausage, um, beef patches is going to bring dessert. We're going to have a little bit. Just eat it up, Jason.
That's what I'm saying.
Anything else? All right. And the city administrators, five-week report, please.
Uh, let's see, our work order system, uh, the previous period, uh, we had thirty-seven, uh, work orders for the street department and we're up to seventy-four. Uh, the rain inhibited us a lot last, last period, so we didn't get a whole lot of orders in, we, now, now we're flooding in this, this week, so. And then, uh, water department went twenty-nine, we're at a hundred and twenty-three, three hundred and twenty-four percent jump. Uh, rain.
Rain.
Yeah, I think we're getting hot. Didn't know that there was a leak there, you know, uncovered sewer problems and stuff like that. Uh, man hours, man hours were, uh, regular man hours were 2,695 this period, twenty-eight status, so the increase is six percent. Uh, over time, it's slowed it down from last period, uh, seven point six seven percent. So, uh, we're working more during the week and less during the off time, which is a good thing. Okay. Uh, building cycle, uh, previous period had 1,855 active meters, uh, we went up three meters, so made a little increase there. Uh, total gallons bill, 13 million 929,984 gallons, and we went down six percent in our gallons, but just looking at them, I'm not sure if that's going to be correct. I got to check that out. Uh, total dollars billed out, 2,000, 255,000, uh, last period, this period, 248,000, and total unpaid from the last period was $1,000, $1,361, which will trigger an animal, probably nicely interesting. Uh, we have some projects that we're working on, the 13th Street Bridge Project, uh, we've cleaned out the drain, uh, working underneath the bridge, uh, we're trying to get drainage all the way to the river and it rained, so it's slow progress immensely. Uh, but this should be underway this week, it's been dry out, we can move the, move the equipment around, so we'll, we'll get started back on that this week. Uh, the water main that was creating the dam by the bridge has been moved, uh, and we were coming in the first to dry out a little bit and tack it with cement. Then we're going to put some concrete on it and so it will flow around nice and we got to have concrete so it'll pull itself back. Uh, the dip that's been taken out, we got a big trench running right through the, through the road right now, and we were doing really good, and we were going right beside the gas main and then it took a ninety-degree, uh, left on us. So it's kind of, we got a whole lot of synergy and asked them, you know, to move it, they said it'd be roughly two weeks. And I don't know how that goes, it could be four, so we, we figured a workaround, uh, we're going to, uh, drop the can right below the gas line and, uh, you know, the way we got it, it should, it should work, we, we can do it without them. Now, they will come later and, and move it, but as of right now, we can proceed and we plan on being finished by Friday. So we should have it open by Friday. Uh, let's see. Downtown, oh yeah, uh, we're still, you'll see people downtown, especially on the weekends, we haven't got their vest yet, they'll give yellow fluorescent badges on the city boundary on it. Um, come on down. Uh, we, we've got some people that are working part-time that, that came to us wanting to help and we're able to put them on and they could work on the weekends if they're off. You know, whenever they're available, they can come in and, you know, work on our sidewalk, uh, if they see plants growing, you know, they'll tend to, trying to keep the area bleached, picked up, clean. Uh, and we're doing the same thing with our sidewalk renovation, uh, especially down East Street. Uh, the sidewalk is, is deteriorated and there's hot holes as well, and, uh, we've got a, like, I work in part-time to, uh, just do both sections at a time as heat's available. And, and it, it doesn't look like you're making a lot of headway all at once, but when you look back in six weeks, then you'll have a lot done, you know, and, uh, that's kind of where we're headed. We're, we're doing a lot of little things all at once and, so, you'll, you'll see him working on the weekend and, or maybe a Thursday or whenever he gets off and if you don't go by there again for another two weeks, he may be finished and you're like, wow, you know, he's done. So as long as we're just moving forward, you know, in the little peace talks, so.
Uh, there's people, we need to utilize the beach out here around the last window, please.
We have, uh, and then.
We have, uh, in, in with our lawn mowers, you know, trying to get them to be conscious of what's been, you know, toward the highway. But it even happens to us. We were one of our brand new vehicles and we had a guy was rolling beside somebody's house and a rock came through and hit the window. So, you know, you know, one of those things. Yeah, yeah, got to watch those.
And that's why it's so important for them to be wearing their safety equipment from their house, use some weed or anything.
Exactly.
Easy to pick up stuff.
Yeah. And, and, uh, we've gone live with our safety program. Our safety officer has, uh, really been pushing the personal protective equipment this week, especially with all the money and, and everything. So, uh, so that's up and running. We got our time clock installed and started using it today. It's going to run in agreement with our special payroll system, uh, so we can get, make sure that they match and there's no bugs in the software, anything that we're doing. I'm thinking maybe three, two, three payroll cycles and we should have everything fixed and we can go live with it. We had booked at, uh, working on the plaza downtown, across the street from the courthouse. And we've asked some people to come in and take a look at, at working on the fountain. Those are starting to trickle in and as it comes to, uh, as we narrow this question down of what everybody's looking for, then, uh, we can start, you know, uh, explain more information on what's going to happen there. And so far, we've had a couple of people come in and they've given us their ideas of what, you know, to do with the fountain. Everything from Las Vegas style to something against it, Cabela's or, you know, basketball shops, you know, so. Anyway, we'll take all the estimates and, uh, we'll let Mrs. Davis take a look at them because she's, uh, I guess heading out that committee. If you want to call it a committee, so.
Can I make one is, who's been the said?
Uh, Marty Kazim. Uh, we're going square by square. So some, some squares need to be replaced, some don't. So in order to really control the cost and not just do the whole old sidewalk, you know, if we can patch it, we'll patch it and move to the next one. And if there's a big crack and if it makes sense to take that out and maybe the next one, then we might do that. But it's, it's.
And you don't want a deep pit that have to build and worse to repair.
Well, it just depends. If you, if you tear one out, you know, if there's a sinkhole there, then you're going to have to throw more sand in and whatnot. But.
My, my point is I'm wondering if big business would be impacted because you've been down this road.
There, there will be some, for instance, uh, apples and spice. She has a big area right there that really needs to be repaired. In fact, she's putting a rug in front of it, okay? But before we work on anything like that, we're going to go to her and coordinate when would be a good time. Because both those sidewalks would inhibit eager, in, ingress and ingress into her door. Right? So they will keep people from finding them out. So we're going to work carefully. We worked up to her, well, somebody talked to her today about what her plans were and what we're going to do. And for right now, we started at the, uh, first community bank. Yeah, credit, yeah, used to be W T U. And then, uh, we're starting on that corner. We have some drainage tract that there's some issues we need to deal with. Trees busted the rocks, so. And it may take a week to get all this fixed and then we'll kind of migrate down again, square by square by square and just evaluate, uh, what we want to do. There's some pieces of the curb that are missing. I was up there Sunday where we were walking a can of paint, just marking off kind of what we're looking at. So as we go, the way we control the cost, we control what we need to do. You know, it, it's going to be a slow process, but, you know, it, it's going to get done. Peace, no, peace.
Well, of course, I was against it, you know, Brian, Mr. Grimes came up with the grant money and marrying the cost of around sixty thousand. And because of all the businesses impacted, Bob was against it and several of them, or I was against it.
Right.
Because it was going to shut businesses down for about four months.
Right.
Well, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Individ, individually.
Well, and, and I think that's why this is a, a plan that we can kind of run with because it's, you know, uh, you know, that's pretty, you know. Yeah, I, instead of, you know, work for holes of concrete, it's just going to be.
Well, the thing with Brian, I think we're going to do the whole sidewalk from time to time.
Right, we were talking to two of his employees. He's talking, peace and out.
In the long-term costs?
Well, uh, I mean, honestly.
You can't say that.
It, it's going to be hard to say because we're going to keep as much as possible. You know, if we can patch it.
Okay.
I'd rather do that, you know.
Can you think of that? Can we replace the whole?
Yeah, and, and if you look down East Street, there's, okay, from a building, you have, you have a section and then you have another section of concrete. Then you have kind of the curb part, okay? So along, along the, the, where the buildings are, we weren't able to find anything that really needed to be replaced. Maybe some holes fixed, you know, little patches. Now it's that second section out from the building that a lot of it needs some work. And, you know, we found a place where maybe four sections in a row. I mean, if we're going to do that one, we might as well do a couple more because they're pretty broke up. We can patch them and then we still like, it's just again, it depends on what we find over there and, you know, how. We're just going to proceed slowly because we don't want it to be exorbitant in cost and, and we don't want to interfere with a lot of. Yeah, I mean, you know, and again, a lot of this will be done during the weekends. For instance, with apples and spice, uh, what we need to do there, we could do in a day and a half. Maybe a day on Saturday or Sunday, so it wouldn't, wouldn't mess with the business.
Well, she can actually be careful with windows, five thousand dollars a piece.
Yes, yes. Well, and again, we won't be having big equipment, so.
Okay.
So just a couple of sledgehammer. But I, I appreciate it.
Can we all be able to go down there on that, all the edges and go down without disturbing the street?
Yeah, in fact, there were, there were only a few places on the curb that, uh, you know, where a car had, like a bumper had pulled some of the concrete away. And, uh, I mean, the curb work on that certain section of A Street wasn't too bad. Now, I, I know there's going to be some places, but we don't want to affect the street at all. Yeah, it's just, really again, just that, that single piece of concrete that's really correct. And what it did is back in oh-five or oh-six, when we put it in, there's no wire mesh, there's no rebar. It's just gravel. Cement, yeah. So, anyway. Oh, uh, we're looking at trying to get our, our street signs together, but Stella was here last time and, uh, which, you know, raised the question, what about all the rest of town? And if you go through, there's a lot of street corners that don't have the right, uh, signs. And in fact, the police found some here the other day that we collected that had been misappropriated, you know. And, uh, we collected those and we're in the process of putting them back up. But, uh, anyway, uh, what we found is the signs themselves can be pretty pricey if you have them made because of stainless steel. But, uh, we, we found where we can get blanks, just the stainless steel at, at average cost. And where we can code it with the numbers and letters on it or something. So, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're going to head. We're going to do a couple and see how, how it works. It's substantially cheaper, so. Yeah, you're right. They are the one, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, stainless heavy, you know, so. Yeah, yeah, well, it's all pricey, but, but they're fine. So we can buy them pre-cut. We just put the cover on it, put the letters on it. Yeah, yeah, that's, they're going to be the same, but, uh, but the actual making of the sign is a lot cheaper. Probably about half or more. We're going to do a couple, see what it looks like and proceed if, if we like it. That's all I had. Oh, uh, if anybody asks you about branches, okay? Because I'm, I'm getting a lot of questions about branches, tree branches, you know. We, we used to have the branch truck just drive around town and, uh, they were, especially this time of year, they start picking up what people were going to use for firewood. And we don't know, but they're sitting on the side of the road and we just go get it and then they call back, ask, they took my firewood. I was going to use this firewood, so. And, and plus it wasn't really getting recorded on our work order system. So, uh, we've stopped just picking up branches around town randomly. People are going to need to call to get it on our work order system and so we can start picking up their branches. Yes, or some minimum line, yes. Yeah, 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 but, uh, I'm getting, I'm getting some, some concerns about it because we don't really know. So we're going to put it in the newspaper that if you have branches to pick up, please call. We're not just going to randomly pick up branches anymore. How you picking up people's firewood? Well, in fact, today I was riding on one of the streets and it was sitting on the side of the road with a pile of branches and then somebody had put in a really nice stack of firewood. And I don't know if it was meant to be picked up or waiting on somebody to pick it up or, you know, so. And, uh, anyway. Uh, that's all I have. Yes, sir.
When you read that ad talking about the pickup and doing a work order, you might also reiterate the fact that the brush needs to be in the front of the property now. Because I still find people in town that don't know that and you're still, uh, putting it in the aisles where it can't be cut.
That is a good point.
Yeah, I talked to a girl last night that was doing that. They put a pile of pomegranate. I'll have my dad's girl up. I said, you in the city will pick that up there tomorrow, right?
What?
Yeah, it's just been on water mill for eight months, you know.
Your request to pitch your agenda items from City Councils. Anything else you need to be on the agenda, please? All right. Thank you all very much. If you're getting ready to go on executive session, just letting you know, Bounder City Council's meeting, executive session is authorized by Texas Delaware Code Section five five one dot zero seven. I'll take the city attorney update on those you do and City of Bounder.